... If your community school Board of Education, for December the 5th, we will begin tonight with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. President. Begin tonight with our presenting school, Mr. Wondry.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, it's my distinct honor to introduce Mrs. Katie Jordan, principal of Murphy Elementary School, to present. This evening.
Hi. Thanks for having me. So, we are presenting, I'm actually going to have Tammy just do the lead by herself, but because I didn't bring you. So, we are presenting on goal number two, which is student-centered coaching. It's 2.1 B. And I brought my learning coach with me, Tammy Curry. So, really, over the last two years, we, last year and this year, have really focused on student-centered coaching. It just has a different feel when we add the student-centered piece to it. Coaching has become a partnership. Coaching is all about student learning. We take, when it's student-centered, we take away that it's not about the teacher. It's about our kids and how they are achieving. And we're really focusing on that achievement. So, that's what this whole presentation was about, just about student-centered coaching and how it looks at the end, where we give a little bit of spin about what's at Murphy. So, it definitely fits within our professional learning. We connect what we're doing at our PD throughout the year to our coaching cycle. And it's really helping to close the gap between what students know and what they need to know. So, and in the process of it being student-centered, I'd say it takes the previous spotlight off of the teacher, but the teacher's obviously getting that PD and that enrichment and able to use that for years to come. So, Tammy Curry is going to speak more closely on the process of coaching, and then I will have her back.
Hi. Okay, so the first thing that we need to do is utilize the coaching cycles between the coach and teachers. So, some of the components of the coaching cycle is that they last for four to six weeks in duration, sometimes a little bit longer if we feel that's needed. Within the cycles, we have what's called planning and reflecting conversations. And that's really based on our pattern of coaching training that we've had. So, beginning, we'll plan with the teachers, plan goals, and I'll go into that a little bit more. And then throughout the process, usually once a week, we'll have a reflective conversation on how the goal is going and what the next steps are. So, we meet at least once a week for a conversation, and we also work together in the classroom one to three times a week. So, that can look different day to day, based on what the students need and what the teacher feels would be beneficial in the classroom. So, the coaching cycles in this group can occur with groups, which might be grade-level groups or pairs, and most of them occur with individuals. And it's always aligned with a unit of instruction that they're currently working on or something that's coming up. So, here's an example of the coach plan, and I gave you a copy of that so I can reference back to it while we go through the presentation. So, at the top, you'll see the student-centered goal, and that is come about with a partnership between the teacher and the coach. It's really based on data, the way that we come up with that goal. And then underneath, you'll see the instructional practices, and that's basically how we're going to reach the goal, what we're going to do within the classroom to reach the goal. You'll see under that the area of focus, it's always based on the Common Core standards, so we'll leave the standards there. And below that, we have student data that we will collect and put out. You'll see the common coaching practices. We always try to keep that in mind when we're going through the process and then the time point. So, at the top, you'll see the goals, the student-centered goal. It's always aligned with the user. It's clear, it's very focused, and it's measurable. So, when we're talking about the goal, we're talking about the learning of the kids or the students, not of the task that they're going to do or the assessment. So, that might be based off of work that the students are doing, and we bring them to PLCs, and we're really digging into that daily work to see what those students need at that time. The goals are also usually set by the teachers. The coach is there to help support with that goal, just so that the teachers are role-related. We don't want to set, the coach doesn't want to say this is what your goal is going to be, because then the teacher's not bought into that goal. So, we have them do some of that planning. So, the instructional practices is below that, and that's basically how we're going to reach the goal within the classroom. So, part of the goal setting practice in the planning conversation. The instructional practices can also be an ongoing thing while we're going through the process, because those can change as we go through that. So, those are set when we whole-plan, and then also if there's no teaching happening throughout the process, those can stay the same, they can change, and add. So, it's just an ongoing thing. And then student evidence to set the goal, and this is where I'm talking about bringing that daily work or assessments to a PLC, and we'll really look into that data. And some of those things could be their conference notes, their even photo notes, their student writing, exit tickets, performative assessments. Readers and writers and notebooks we look at a lot. And then it's about continuous formative assessments that they bring. Basically, looking at all of it to inform our decisions for what the next steps will be. And then, we always have a piece to measure the goal. So, before, or let's see, after we set the goal, then we will go into the classroom, usually the coach will do this, and we'll collect some kind of pre-data, so we know where the students are right at that moment in time. And then we'll go through the coaching cycle, and at the end, we'll have the post-data. It should be the same type of assessment or same type of information that you're collecting, and that way you can measure the growth. I'll give you an example, the one that they have. This is for kindergarten, but they just finished up, and it's for a new teacher. So, when we first started it, it's hard to see, but I think 13% of her students knew their letter sounds, and it's something that is crucial in kindergarten for them to move on with their reading and writing. So, we really focused on that within conference instruction. And then last week, we finished it up, we reassessed, and there was one student in the class that was, I think they had 23 sounds instead of the 24 or 26, that was that goal. So, that's how we measured it, and it was...
That was a six-week cycle?
Oh, I don't know what it was. The dates are on there, October 5th to November 30th, so yeah, about seven weeks. For sure. Does anybody have any questions before I...
I do have a question.
Sure.
Is this running parallel to classroom instruction, or is the entire class doing this? I'm trying to get a picture of all that work.
Sure.
Are you selecting certain populations?
So, there's different ways that it can be done. It can be the whole class, and yes, that would be parallel with what's happening with the instruction in class. There could also be where they pick a group of students that maybe are having trouble in or they're lacking in something, and the teacher needs some support with that group of students. So, there's...
So, when the teacher's pulling a small group to work on a certain field, then Tammy might be working with those coaching...
The reason I'm asking that is because, you know, I see there's 82% proficiency increase, right, in this timeframe? So, are you able to measure that against what's going on in the classroom of those that are not in this? I mean, is the classroom, are they keeping up with the classroom this way?
This is the actual plan, it's at the bottom, and it was 22 students, so we did include our entire class.
Okay, so that was the entire class?
Yes, this was our entire class. There were a couple more that moved in, so they were new, so they weren't included in the data piece of it. But yes, this one was the whole class.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you have some, that you could actually measure them against each other and see, you know...
Not in the same class necessarily, but I do have some data to share about coaches or teachers that receive coaching and teachers that shouldn't receive coaching and what that looks like for their achievement in their classroom.
Thank you.
I just want to say, you know, it's wonderful to see how things are evolving. When you think back in the day, teachers were kind of like sequestered in their own classroom, you shut the door, you didn't have support, you had unruly students or a trouble spot, you were kind of on your own, and maybe even fearful to tell people to get help. But now there's that trust building, and nobody's alone anymore, nobody's on an island by themselves, and that's got to be a good feeling.
Yeah, that's very true. The last couple of years, the coaching teacher relationship has really improved, and we've noticed a change in trust a lot. So, I am in, like, having a classroom now, and we feel comfortable with it.
When you look at the last, we talked a lot about the strategic planning process, the student achievement gains we've seen the last four years, and Michelle and I talk about this all the time, you've got to look at what's different now in the district that wasn't here for years past, and why we had a flat line in achievement. And I would say it's probably three things, primary reasons why. The recent curriculum change we've made, K-12 now is K-5, but certainly having a word with a aligned curriculum. And coaching, really, because we, when you just start focusing on evaluating teachers and don't have a viable curriculum, without a full support, you just have the expectations that we have the output of student achievement. It's not very realistic to expect anything. Well, now you have the other curriculum, you have a real line, and I want to say it's better than it's ever been. And with the types of coaching supports that Tammy's expressing, not just at Murphy, obviously, but universally, those are the primary differences, I think. And you've been here a number of years, Tammy, and you think that that's, do you agree with that, making it's different than that, or are there other things that you attribute to?
No, I agree, I agree, that when we really meet and talk about specific areas, we're really focusing in on what the kids need. And maybe years ago, in the middle of the day, and then really pull a lot of the focused instructions out of that day.
I have a couple of Murphy headaches that I think are important to share, and I know you guys asked about, or we talked already about the trust piece. Last year and this year, last year Tammy was only 60% at Murphy. This year, we have a full-time coach, which is called Tammy, so I won that battle, great battle with Tammy's meeting. And so, one thing that we feel really strongly about, and we do have the idea, Tammy and I go together and visit every PLC and roll out our expectations for coaching. So, it's her and I together really sending that message of, this is what I expect, but Tammy also expresses the same. So, I want 100% coaching in the building. Last year, we had 10 out of 12 teachers participate in coaching, and this year, the next cycle, we will have 100% of coaches, oh, teachers receiving some kind of coaching cycle already this year. So, I think that's pretty exciting, and a lot of, a lot of trust is built. And even from beginning of last year to this year, teachers are, teachers are seeking her out constantly, they want her help. She finishes the cycle, and they're like, well, when are you, are you going to be back? And she's like, I need to go and, you know, be a... No, I need you, I need you, I need you in here. So, we've done a couple of book studies, the coaches have done, the same book study, student-centered coaching, administrators have done that as well, and that just puts us all on the same page, we're talking the same language. The cognitive coaching training that we've had allows us, Tammy and I, to have a conversation, and it allows Tammy to then go and have that conversation with the teachers. In our pre-evaluation meetings, in my pre-evaluation meetings with all the teachers, one of my questions I ask them is, how will you be using the coach this year? I don't say, will you be using the coach? I want to know what have you thought about, how will you be using that coach this year? Most of them have an idea already, if not, when they come back to me, then we can talk about that as well. Our MAP data supports improvement in student achievement. We have some program eval survey data from last year, so 89% of instructional practices that were addressed in the coaching cycle were observed by me and being implemented in the classroom. So, it's not just kind of a willy-nilly do it and we're done, those things are then being continued on throughout the course of the year. Coach, or teachers, in a classroom where students received coaching, 68% of students performed average or higher, and in a classroom where they did not receive coaching, that was only 44%. So, our coaching survey data reveals that 85% of teachers felt that the coaching cycle they were involved in was effective. They report on the survey that they, they really, they liked it, and they wanted, and they're learning things. And Murphy, as you guys know, has many veteran teachers, and they are very much willing to have a coach come in and work with them as well. So, 18 total cycles were completed last year, and of those 18, 13 were initiated by the teachers, and five were initiated by me. So, we still have had some reluctance, you know, last year, but like I said, the next cycle, we'll have 100% of teachers. So, I just want to read one quote from one of the teachers, it says, "The learning coach and I are working together to create student-led discussions during partner reading and whole group instruction. We are modeling teaching and deep breathing lessons together. With her, with her help, my student-led discussions are improving with each lesson." So, they're, they're really excited to have a coach, and that it is student-centered. So, when you take away that teacher-centered piece, it really opens the door for them to grow as teachers. Any questions? Thanks.
Next, that takes us to public comments. Statement from the board. A board meeting is a meeting of our school district business that is held in the public and is not a public meeting. The board sets aside time for public comment, and it's not an open forum, and requests presenters address the board. The board will not respond to those making public comment, but may direct the superintendent to follow up with the presenters. That lack of response should not be construed as an agreement or disagreement with those comments, which merely the board's staying in compliance with the Open Meetings Act and the posted agenda for this meeting. The board does not comment in public on any student or employee, and asks the presenters to be respectful of any person they comment about. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less. We will begin with Brandon Prenger.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. I'm here to speak, I am a newly at MSU Extension Office, I am also employed with the AmeriCorps. We have started up a new program in Michigan. I am teamed up with 17 other counties throughout Michigan to help bring state clubs, which are special interest clubs, to the public. My area is going to be LaPere County, and what I'm going to be focusing on are state clubs that can help high school kids, even as low as elementary school, find a passion that they are, would like to pursue. LaPere County has an outstanding rate of having 90% of its kids graduate high school. Unfortunately, only 40% of them will continue to go on to college, and nearly 30% of those will actually get either a certification or a four-year bachelor's degree by the age of 25. The goal of the AmeriCorps and MSU Extension, we are trying to create these state clubs to make kids interested in, especially in the trades, electrician, plumbing, carpentry, computers, anything that anyone is willing to teach to the youth is what I'm looking for. I am the program coordinator, so my job is to coordinate with anyone who would like to come voluntarily at a time, where it's only short-term time, where it's either 30 to eight meeting sessions, and it's up to your prerogative on how long you want it to be, to teach them anything from electronics, carpentry, bacon. We have one program starting up next month, they are going to be teaching American Sign Language to the students. And we also have another one for theatrical acting, where the kids will learn the basics of acting as well. Myself and one other program, Courtney, will be assisting with that one. So, I'm just spreading the word out, so that if you know anyone that has a skill that would love to teach it to the youth, we would love to have them come forward. For the youth, if they are non-4H members, it is only $20, up to $60 for a family of three or four. And that covers all programs from now until August. So, it's a one-time fee. If there aren't any 4H members, it is already free for them, and we are trying to keep it so that the supply cost is very minimal. So, if you know anyone that would love to step forward, they can contact me at the MSU Extension Office. I do have some flyers for the acting program, the American Sign Language, one will be coming out in the newsletter next, once we get to the biggest finals.
Where is your office at?
The office is 1800 M.C. Road, so it's just outside town, M.C.
You're in basement, or is it...
On our first floor, so one through, I just go into the parking lot, the door that is on the east side of the building. You can go inside there, and that's the MSU Extension portion. My office is just a little, you can go to the secretary, and you can find me there. My contact information is on the flyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Okay, next, go to Mr. Wondry.
First off, it's nice to be here in person, I usually watch it or dinner, that is a great thing to be able to do, so I appreciate, I appreciate the time. For those of you who don't know me, you know, both my kids went to the peer-to-peer schools, started at Attica, did real well, they're all, my son and daughter, both out of college, on their jobs, life's going good, you know, couldn't ask for more.
Well, thank you for coming.
Well, you're welcome. My daughter, on the other hand, oh, but she was the last class at Attica, she was the last class at Zimmer before it closed, and she was last class at Pier East. So, she was really worried when she went to Alma that she might close down part of the building.
Not a chance, you could close the harbor of the Midwest or no, not a chance.
But I come tonight because I, with, I know, I've been with forums, and I've been trying to keep abreast of what's going on. We've got some, probably some upcoming changes to the district, and I come here, I'm just, you know, I'm not a parent anymore, I'm just a taxpayer, just a guy. But I'm the kind of guy, people just like me, or what you're going to have to convince to get the next bond proposal rolling. Some things that I've seen that concern me a little bit, I was at the forum, I wish there's some situation, maybe this can be addressed, that in other groups, we get more outside people, non-school employees, and not, that's the people that are going to carry the weight. We need to, you know, I didn't see, as, you know, I saw a couple, but I didn't see lots. I hope that, you know, maybe there's some way we could include something else to get some feedback from these people, to try to convince more people of us on. For those who, you know, we've got a history in this district of not passing a lot of bonds. I was part of the 2007 bond campaign, it did, was successful, went out to the district, did try to help sell it. Over years, I've been a volunteer for the district, I have nothing but respect for current, you know, current administration. Mr. Wondry's done a great job, he came in a situation that was really not good, and he's totally changed the ballpark for our kids, and for that, I'm determinedly grateful. But there are some things we're looking at. When we passed that bond in '07, we had some expectations. Now, I understand those had to be reworked, but I'm just looking at actual bond money that's gone into these elementaries. But I know that people say, well, it's mining, but if you look at Mayfield, $800,000, Murphy, $340,000, Schickler, $367,000, Pearl, $1,050,000, Lynch, $998,000, thumbs for million. Effectively, when you look at these combined, maybe, we're saying, well, we've got a lot of money in Mayfield Grove. When we sold, to my knowledge, we've only sold, the only building we sold, it was more, the highest price for mine, believe, except for the old admin building was Attica, $175,000. So, this is definitely a long way to go. My goal is to see that we do not ever have to see that again, because whether we like or not, we're paying that money back. The taxpayers of this district are paying back every dime from every building that we have closed that we're not using, or we will close and sell. I hope that everybody can keep that in mind. I've seen in some of the social media, it's some, you know, a little bit of facts can be kind of dangerous, and I know that's, that's nobody's fault, it is building, but I, but I have to say, if things get out there and people don't necessarily keep things the way they should, because this is, I understand, is a working process, but there's just, there's kind of this nonsense going in there. And, you know, when we passed that previous bond, we had Stanford Associates, and I don't know if you folks know what that is, though we had surveys, we had surveys in 2003, 2004, '05, and '06. I didn't even know about those, what they were until well after the bond had passed. I was never even told, you know, that what the situation was. Of course, I did find out, because he, you know, had the elementary closed, as well as this building closed. So, the trends were starting, but my hope is that as we move forward on this, we get a good perspective on it for everybody, and, and you're looking, we still owe $41 million on that bond, you tie that with, you had $75,000, $100,000, $125,000, take and pick, it's a lot of debt. So, we need to make sure that it counts, and we need to make sure that every dollar counts for our students. We also are looking at, you know, it's going to take a long time to, I don't understand, again, this is a working process, but this needs to be done with the utmost care, serving, and looking to the future. I don't know, you know, people, you know, a lot of people say, well, this money in these elementaries is kind of, it really, we couldn't, you know, it wasn't our fault, I mean, it's fine and maybe, but the fact is, what could we do with the money, the wasted money that we're spending for buildings that we're having closed? So, my position to you is just be diligent, be thorough, this is not criticism of Mr. Wondry or anybody else, but we waste a lot of money, we could do a lot, we could have done a lot of really good things with some of the money that, that we don't have. So, I would just hope that as we move forward here, that we keep that in mind, that none of those things are good things out. Thank you.
And Beth Bullock? Welcome.
For those of you who don't know me yet, I, all of you know me, I have been a teacher in the district for quite a few years now, it was my third career, so started back in 2005, I've been very happy to be a teacher here. And I really just came because in... And I really just came because in looking at Thanksgiving and Christmas coming up, this whole season of giving and Thanksgiving, I came to tell you about the support that I receive and how grateful I am for it. And I know I do a lot of things that are kind of out of the box, not quite the norm, but I have never felt unsupported. When I first came in and was very gung-ho about technology, Peggy Bush helped me go to McCall the second year that I was in the district. Doug's there, asked for funding, so a whole large group of us could go and invest in the technology, the information there. So I've been supported by you, the school board, I've been supported by administration. This year, I'm getting to teach inferno coding, which is so much fun. It is very nice to be 60 years old and be able to say, "I am having the most fun teaching this year that I have ever had," because I love teaching eighth graders so much. And they love coding, they love it. When I was at Mayfield, I did a coding club, the students came out in a blizzard. My husband, it was January, he said, "You need to come home, they're not going to come after this." I said, "Yes, they are." Thirty kids came out in a blizzard so that they could do coding in the computer lab at Mayfield. My eighth graders who are doing it now, and many of them are special education students, but they love it. I don't have the behavior issues because they love what they're doing. And I got support from administration for this. When I wanted to redo my classroom, and my classroom looks like a cafe. I have cafe booths, and the kids sit, I've got round tables. Very different than your traditional eighth grade classroom. And I wanted to do this, and administration supported me, and then all the way up the line, people supported, giving the kids that opportunity to be comfortable and learn in a little different atmosphere. So I got support all along the way. When it comes to just day-to-day things, I had a ninth grader who went bad, he's a big hefty guy, he decided to jump up on one of the tables that I bought to dance, do the flos. The table collapsed, the leg broke, and one of our, guys, one of our custodial people went on a search and found in another building an extra chair leg or a table leg so that he could fix the table for me. I mean, it's just amazing to me how much support I constantly get from everyone in this district. So I appreciate the opportunity for that. And new club this year. Speaking of other opportunities for students, I was given permission to have an esports club. I have students come out, these are not your traditional kids, but they come out every Wednesday, and they love, they bring their own stuff, they're very clear, we made it very clear, "Guys, we are not doing first-person shooters here, I will happily support you, but we are going to keep this on the up and up." I have special education students, they live for this. I was in an IP meeting where the grandmother, who was there, when she discovered that I was the esports club sponsor, she said, "You were saved, weren't you? Because you are my motivator, or my grandson." It's like, you get off work, then you get to go to esports. You get to work there. I was delighted to hear that, but it's just been great, the support that I get, all the way around the board. Learning coaches, oh my goodness, I can't say enough good things about them. Karen Allman in our building, in every one of my classes, except coding, but in my social studies classes, I have one student, I'm also a special education teacher, although I'm doing gen ed right now, so I have a pretty good bag of tricks, but I've got one young man in each class, they're not special ed, and I just don't know how to reach them. Karen Allman took time out of her busy schedule to come and do observations for me, because it's hard to watch a student all hour when you're also trying to teach 32 other kids, or 30, or whatever, and then met with me so that we could discuss it and come up with some ideas. I just want you to know how much I appreciate all the support that I get from everyone in the district all the time. That's all. Thank you so much.
As a public service announcement, there is a table somewhere in the district. I'm not sure where. That leg was taken, it's best to, we have to look out for that.
That takes us to focus group preliminary results.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, very, very preliminary, as we're still going through this process. The board is in receipts, the board packed this week of kind of a collection of comments, both advantages, disadvantages, pros and cons, overall thoughts, questions, and concerns that we're able to collect from the two primary focus groups. As a reminder, the demographics of those, both Roland Warner and the December meetings, it was about 50% folks in the community, 50% staff. All told, in the months of September, October, and November, we have interacted with about 500 people, students, staff, and community. I would say a super majority of the folks that we've spoken with, especially the original focus panels back in September, members of our community, business owners, a bunch of officials, alumni, and parents. And quite frankly, the process, I'm not going to belabor the update by going through each of these advantages, disadvantages, and feedback, that's up to you to do on your own, but just some generic comments about where we're at in the process. A lot of really good feedback, and what's really neat to note is how vastly different the options that we're considering now truly are from whence we started back in August, kind of beginning to articulate some sort of plan. And it really, I think, speaks to openness that we've demonstrated, our willingness to listen to new ideas. As a matter of fact, the morning after our quote-unquote "final focus group," we got an email suggesting yet another option. You were able to see the YouTube video that we put out to the 85-plus focus group participants and kind of walking people through the, you know, the diagram of how this has evolved, and we're still in the midst of collecting all that feedback. So it's really premature to say kind of where folks are leaning. I think there's a lot of interest in all the possible configurations. Beyond that, we are working behind the scenes with Bart Mallow to begin to identify actual bond dollars, what it would be going towards. And in addition to that, we have had to do, and will continue to do, significant research in an effort to educate the community of the changes made to our buildings since 2003, whether it's from a bond or sinking fund dollars, very specifically in each building, what those expenditures were designed to produce, what was the impetus for how that money was to be spent, what was the overall outcome and impact of those dollars, in an effort to demonstrate that there hasn't been considerable waste, and there was a necessity for many of those purchases, and they were oftentimes a result of high levels of community input. I'll give you one example. You remember, at any given point since 2003, there were 15-plus portables adjacent to many of our, many of our school buildings. And it came out of many community forum engagements, like the one we've had recently, that our community was not happy with that. And so much of the sinking fund dollars that were spent in the early 2000s were a direct result of the community's request to expand the size of the existing elementary facilities to add more classrooms, to eliminate the need for the portables. And so, again, I believe we have a strong history in the district of continuing to listen to the community and be open to their suggestion. And this is an ambitious plan, we know that. So what's our timeline? Our timeline is, you're not, we're not going to present a final plan until we've got a more solidified understanding of what those bond dollars can and should purchase. We are going to meet with each board subcommittee in the month of December to really dive into the specificity of these plans and get your direct feedback as board members, as the folks that are going to be charged ultimately making the decision in that time period. So we're probably looking at, I would see sometime in January or February, is what we originally said, we'd come up with a final plan. We're going to continue to evaluate a community response. I have a number of engagements that are planned for the next 60 days, most of which are in our community at large, where I'll be sharing with the two kind of primary options that are out there right now, kind of telling our case. Any engagement that I give a presentation at prior to announcing a final plan, they're difficult, because folks want to hear exactly how much money is being spent, which buildings are you recommending for closure, what is the final reconfiguration? And so we have to couch the message in, "I want to give you some idea of what we're thinking, but we're still collecting your thoughts and any info you have." Because I'm not, I'm not saying this to be cliché, every single time we meet with a group of people, we come up with a new idea, and we come up with an improvement to the plan, or yet another option to consider, and it makes it better. So, and folks can see that. Folks can see that, you know, that original plan, half those buildings are not even used anymore because of the input that the community, so it's been a great process, and it's still getting lots of emails and lots of input, positive, negative, suggestions, new ideas. And so I look forward to meeting with each of you in December and getting your input very directly. Most of you participate in the focus groups, one or whole, so you know what's going on and you have valuable insight to that. So any questions on that process, or where we're at? I'll entertain those now.
I just want to say, I thought we had a good focus group meeting. Jan was there, and Peggy was there, I was there, and a lot of community teachers, administrators, and it was a really healthy discussion. The table that I was at, everybody was very engaged, had a lot of ideas, and then they all kind of came together and shared those ideas with Bill. So I didn't think it's a football process. I take, you know, Bill's point, we need to bring in a community and enroll on different people's ideas and thoughts and opinions to have the best possible hand we can, so.
Yeah, it was interesting. I attended both of them, and they were both different, because there was enough people there. So you watched how it started with this, and then after discussion, and like the other idea that's, and then the second one. It was, I really, I really thought it was very insightful to be at both of them.
Yeah, same presentation, same handouts and everything, but very different.
Oh, yeah, very different. We didn't, we didn't even get to some of the same items. We got to the first.
Absolutely.
But yeah, I would like to somehow, I know you can't make people do anything, but I, I don't know what else we can do to encourage the people that live in this district to come. Because, you know, some people, some of our staff live in this district, it's unhelpful. So until it's going to hit you personally, I don't know how you can.
It's frustrating.
You can't make people do anything, but I'd rather have them come. And I encouraged it myself, when people made comments to me, "You need to come, you need to come to these." If you don't want to say anything, just listen, you know? Your input is the in order.
A lot of mediums, Jared can speak to this better than I can, but Facebook, the website, the county press, lots of personal interaction in the buildings, asking, nobody from the community that wanted to participate was that happy opportunity to do it. I simply said, "You email Mrs. Boss, and she'll get your email, she'll get your phone number, and the date you want to be in." And how many weeks do we advertise the focus groups?
At least one week.
At least a month. Right, yeah. It's frustrating, because my original goal, Jan, we said we want 100 people at each meeting, and the distribution I wanted was 70% community, 30% staff. We got to about 50/50 at each meeting, so we're going to keep trying though.
One of the takeaways that I got from the focus groups meeting was the, it's not educating people. They don't understand, what does community involvement mean in a school? And you start talking about how different business partnerships can, maybe they would take and say, "Okay, we're going to support this type of instruction," whether it be biomedical, right, or clerical, and say, "We're going to support this." But what does that mean? And so you have all of these different community partnerships. Once that understanding got out there, people that didn't understand it, I mean, the lights were going on, and then they're coming up with ideas, "Well, gee, they could do this, they could do that," right? And so, you know, we can be frustrated, and it is frustrating, you can't get it out. And we can ask them to come, but I think it's going to be incumbent on us to get that message out there one way or another, whoever.
And that's a great point, Mike, you have to go to where people are. So this evening, after this board meeting, I'm meeting a group of Turl dads, they have a Turl dads group, and they said, "We meet on Wednesdays." And I said, "Well, that's going to be tough for me, I have board meetings on Wednesdays, but..." So the first Wednesday of the month, okay, that's every board meeting. I said, "But I will come afterwards." Right, so Peggy and Wendy, really going to miss you guys. You're great people, thanks for your service, but as soon as we hit the gavel, I got to have to meet with the Turl dads.
I thought you were going to make us go.
I'll let you sit this one out, Wendy. I'll let you sit this one out. But the point is, is that you have to go where the people are. And a lot of those dads didn't have the opportunity to come to the PTC meeting or come to the focus group, so we'll go there. And so really doing both, it's not enough to say, "Well, we have board meetings, so just come and tell us what you think." You got to do the town hall forums, you got to do the focus groups, you got to go to the Legion Hall, you got to go to Kiwanis, you got to go to where the dads meet, where the moms meet. And we're going to, we're going to do that for the next several months. Every time we go and educate, like Mike referred to, people learn, and they either disagree or agree, but they, we can't just say, "Well, we had these three events, that was your opportunity to learn about what was happening, so gee, sorry you didn't hear it, tough luck."
And every time that we educate, possibly we have another ambassador, and that's going to go out and tell somebody else, "Well, this is where I know now."
I've got one month to go to come back and say, "Support us a plan fully," and I'm going to use that time very wisely. Should we put you down for January already? Fair enough.
Any other questions or comments? Before we move on? Before we move on? We have one report tonight, Mrs. Byrd will give her last.
Yeah, you're right. I have one more to attend, but this is the last one I'll give.
It is?
That's no impression. It may get exciting. So we met on November 29th, and I saw Denise, Matt, Shal, and Doug. And the bulk of the meeting was two new course proposals, which I think we all agreed were some great courses. One was AP Computer Science Principles, and the course would provide the opportunity to meet the state's curriculum in multiple facets. First, it could potentially serve as a student's third science credit for the Michigan AmeriCorps curriculum. Additionally, the course prepares students for further education in the area of computer science. This technology-based field is aligned to the demands of industry and is a major component of our state's push in the STEM fields. We have applied for a non-competitive grant in the amount of $6,000, which would cover the cost of the textbooks. The second course that we talked about was a marketing course, and it would provide for more student opportunities to learn the basic foundations of marketing and the world around them. Critical thinking would be used on a daily basis, along with problem-solving skills and team-building exercises. It would also meet the economic graduation requirements for students, as well as the math and visual art requirement as a senior class. Students taking this course would have the opportunity to get college credit. This class would run as a full-year course in order to receive additional school funding through Perkins Grants, which takes place within the career technical education process through an articulation agreement. Both courses would be two semesters in length and be available to nine 12th-grade students. So they seem like some really strong courses. And then lastly, the overnight trip request, which we stand in awe of our band instructors once again, because they want to take Leupre High School and Summer Band students to Covenant Hills Band Camp in Otisville in August. We have approved this trip for many years, and we are recommending that we approve it again tonight. So thank you to them. End of meeting, Jim?
I don't know what the rest of you, I think that was your best work right there.
I tried to bring it up a little. There was a passion.
Seth, what about her?
Yes.
All right. Any questions, comments for Mrs. Byrd? We move on to action items, and we have a consent briefing, and in that consent briefing is the approval of the minutes of November 7 regular meeting and the overnight request that Mrs. Byrd was mentioning.
I'll make a motion that reading of the minutes be waived, and that the consent agenda, I... items should be approved as you presented.
I will support that if you guys will all agree with me that that was probably her best.
She's going out strong.
I don't think I've ever heard a motion that...
Pretty back days ago.
You saved the best for last.
Hi, buddy.
Hi.
Mrs. Proback.
Hi.
Mr. Nolan.
Hi.
Mrs. Byrd.
Hi.
Mrs. Ducker.
Hi.
Mrs. Bush.
Hi.
Mr. Keller said, hi, and that motion carries. Takes us to board members communication topics. Who would like to begin?
How do we do this? Because we had comments.
Yeah, I wrote.
So did I.
But I have bigger questions. She got like a lot of...
I said, three minutes, Wendy. Double space, size eight font.
I think Peggy should go first because she's been on the board for 22 and a half years, so I'm just her rookie at some.
So, seriously, you guys should do that.
Yeah.
So, I'll start by saying thank you, Katie and Tammy. I'll start by saying thank you, Katie and Tammy, for your presentation. It's awesome to hear what you're doing at Murphian, we're really excited about it. And I'm really excited, you know, I've gone to the craft shows in the schools, awesome way to get into the schools and view, you know, just look around and so many people there. I'm also excited about the project graduation, things coming up, like books and badges and this Friday night. So, yeah, the sheriff's department, yeah, I think that's gonna be kind of fun.
Yeah. Everybody's gotta stretch out for that.
So, some cool events that they're doing.
Thank you, Murphy. All you do. Thank you for those that come and speak in public time. I personally like public time because we hear new things from the community and I wanna congratulate you, Mrs. Bush, on your many years of service. You know where your heart is, one, in a dual role as a school board member and as a nurse. Thanks very much.
Clap mid-cabicular line. Between clap mid-cabicular line between the fourth and the fifth.
So, you've been a mentor to me when I started here, when I first went back here as a nurse at the health department. Thank you. You've been a mentor to me in this position and your work. So, I wish you and Mr. Bush and your family so much fun and nice adventure. And you, Wendy, thank you again. Your passion for education is, it flows every time you speak. I've heard wonderful things about you and your role at HOP, I mean, help the kids in that role. Best wishes to you and I'm sure you and your husband will be traveling as you always like to do. Thank you.
I'm like, where's Cindy at now? I was there on the Golden and the Potter in Florida.
He's like your best friend as well.
You have a wagon, we all have wagons this year.
Thank you very much. Best wishes to you.
Yeah, I guess I forgot, I'm sorry. The funny thing is Peggy planted the seed for me and Wendy filled it, literally. I took her on the board, it was so funny. I was doing a training and Peggy was attending under, in one of my trainings and she, I said, you know, I've always thought about it. She's like, come on, do it! And so, I was like, you're a good girl.
And then she coincided.
And then I run into Wendy at Leupre Mott and she just took off with it. I was gonna say, so I...
Yeah, when I get to 05...
Yeah, Peggy was.
The longest standing. Now, Mike and I are the longest standing. But yeah, it's been an awesome ride and I'm gonna miss you guys. Yeah, we've gone through a lot of stuff. And, and thank you guys a lot. It is, it's interesting, when we moved down to 96 to look at even them, you know, the teachers that we had that were veteran teachers and how resistant everybody was to any kind of change or help and how awesome it is now. It's, it's just great. It's just great to see that everybody can, can understand that you can improve no matter how many years you've been teaching. And I think that's so exciting. And thank you so much for your comments. It is so awesome to hear when, you know, everything makes an impact and makes you happy or makes us happy to hear that. So, that is, is great to hear. Yeah, it's gonna be, we only have a couple of good, good seats. Good people come and fill the seats. So, can't forget that too.
Makes it my turn. About, let me start with you. I can count on one hand the number of times people have ever come in here and said, thanks for anything. Or, hey, you're doing a good job. And I was just laughing the other day with someone at lunch and I said, being a member of the school board is the one job where I think you get kicked and punched more than any other I've ever had. And we, everybody jokes and they said, well, it's the one place for sure where no one ever comes and says, thank you. And so, boy, do I appreciate your comments. It's just, it's just nice to hear. And the fact that, you know, we sit up here and we hope that you're being supported. And, you know, and every time that anyone comes into many of the buildings, you know, at least my comments, and I know everyone's thinking around the table are, we think we're exhausting you people. So, I'm glad that you still have that hash in and drive and your kids are obviously seeing the benefit of all of that, so thank you. And you too. Tammy, Tammy's been coming for years and she's been the model of what good teaching looks like in all different schools that she's been at. She presented to us at every school she's been in. And there's a reason why. There's a reason why. Tammy is absolutely an expert in her field and someone who is honing her, honing her craft to the benefit of all of us in this district. And Tammy, we can't thank you enough. And you, you came into that school down there that I take so much pride in and, you know, it's just great to see that you've continued to drive educational excellence down there. I know sometimes that staff can be difficult. I've seen that over the years. I do love the fact that in your spirit that it's, she didn't say, my goal next year is to have 100%, you said, it will be 100%. And I really appreciate that, you know? You're 83% of the leadership leading, which is only two that weren't in, but I really also like the fact that you've driven that down to folks and then not only, it's not something that they have to do, but they want to do. And I really appreciate that. Thank you very much. I was sitting and thinking about all the different things that I might say with you two tonight and I thought, any of you who've suffered through this in the past, I've written limericks to all the guys that have lived through it. I couldn't do that to you guys.
So, he wrote a song. Did it, guys?
So, actually, we're all gonna perform a skit. Oh, great.
Not a more.
With you two, I don't know where to start. Wendy, first of all, and everyone has said it, it's because you exhibited in everything you do, it's passion. You wear it on your sleeve, you put it out there for all of us and you, it's, you fuel that fire that keeps us all going. And I really appreciate that. I mean, in your conviction, you're there. I mean, the one word for you is character. It's just, you bring it up, you model it, you preach it, you live it, and we all very much appreciate what you've done for us in this district. And Peggy, your words grace. I mean, you, you have been there every step of the way. I've never been to a board meeting that you weren't present. This is really gonna be difficult. And, but, you know, your compassion, your expertise, you know, your sort of quiet style of leadership is appreciated maybe more than you really know. You know, we, obviously, when I first got here, the jokes were you were President Bush and when we had President Bush. But even when you weren't President Bush, you continued to fill that leadership role and it's just been fantastic to work with you. I've learned a lot from you and I appreciate it more than you'll ever know. With you, one thing that meant the most to me had nothing to do with being a school board member. And you may not remember this because it's an everyday thing, I can tell for you. It's just, your, your caring and compassion. When we were up at Grand Traverse, the one time I ever went to an MASP meeting and my, I think, two or three-year-old daughter was running around the restaurant and she'd about had enough for the evening. And you corralled her, brought her over to your lap and you won her over like that. And who do I love? I love people that love my kids. Peggy, I love her. Fantastic work. So, thank you very much for like...
One last. Katie, Tammy, thank you for everything you're doing and specifically here from all the schools and practices, like what you're doing. You see what's going on with our church. We're going through, I believe we just started and it's what you're doing and just keep doing that, keep hammering away. I am too worried about that. It's only gonna be, I'm telling you, this, 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 we're gonna be world-class. I'd like to begin first of all, Russ, Keith, you can stand up for a minute.
I just wanna give them a round of applause. Because I, I know what you all contribute, but we don't know what they've contributed, but we kind of do know because we're in the same seat. And there's always the spouse that, you know, they're at home or whatever and maybe they're planning.
I think maybe there's a lot.
But there is, there's a sacrifice and there's a sacrifice that you have made and you have given up your better half to help this district. And you both have helped this district tremendously. And, you know, we spent a lot of years together from back in administration there and I'll never forget when we were getting to that cusp of starting to get the pieces together and Peggy said, I have decided I'm not gonna run. I'm like, well, no. Peggy, we're gonna have a little meeting here.
We're not gonna run, we're not gonna...
No, and I, and I just remember sitting down and talking to Peggy that, look, you are what has made what we are, where we're going and look where we're headed, you have to be part of this. And Russ, I'm sorry, I'm keeping her away the much longer we have here. She said, I just need to talk to Russ. And it was like just a day, you know? It was like, I'm gonna do it. And I am, I am so grateful that you hung in and you have done so much, you have contributed so much. And Wendy, it's, all of these meetings, all of the hours put in, the emails, the, I don't know, I'll miss those 20-minute...
Audio comment?
Audio things.
Thank you!
Speak for yourself.
Maybe this one might fall me out of memory.
I can kill someone.
But it's, it is, it's good.
It is the culmination of all of those little pieces that you both put into this district that's made this district what it is. And I just can't tell you how grateful I am for what you have done for this district. And I just, I really appreciate all of your time, your effort, your support. We've gone through good times, we've been through pretty bad times too. And everybody has kind of stuck together and we have worked their way through. I just really want to thank you for everything you've done.
That leads us to...
I wrote it, big print. It has been an honor to have served this district as an elected member of the esteemed Superior Community School Board of Education for the past 22-plus years. We were in the admin building where Rite Aid is today when I stood in front of predecessors of this board and applied to fill a vacant position. There were seven of us applying for that position and my husband was the first one to do his application because he started with a D and I was the last person because I started with a Q. And neither one of us got appointed, nor did anyone else who applied and was another person who took forward. But I was asked afterwards by members of the board, would I consider running for a two-year term? And I said, sure, because I have this problem of not saying no. And as they say, the rest is history. I have had the pleasure of working with eight superintendents and acting superintendents, some who filled in for short periods of time and some who filled in for a little longer periods of time. Three board secretaries, a half a dozen board presidents, multiple committed board numbers, hundreds of staff and a few thousand students, many of whom I shook their hand when they graduated, because I have gone through a couple of cycles. To each one of them, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for sharing your wisdom, your critic, your critiques, your ideas, your commitments on reaching the highest level of education possible for every student who attends this district. To the past and current members of this board, you have always remained steadfast in keeping each student focused in every decision that was made. We started out a long time ago saying a slogan that sits there on our wall and has been for a number of years and is best so eloquently said earlier, every student can learn, we just have to figure out how. Every year has brought its own unique challenges from textbooks and books that weren't considered to be proper and federal court challenges and a few thousand other things. But I can honestly say that no matter what the situation, whether it was an outside force or an internal change or a combination of both, no one ever said, from administration down to everyone who was involved, it can't be done, we'll figure it out. To Matt and Mark and Kim and Jen and Michelle and Jarrett, to Mary, to the staff of central office, to each of the buildings within this district, the principals, the teachers, the support staffs in the individual classrooms and building-wide, to building and district maintenance support, to the secretarial staff who often keep this, their buildings on a steady course no matter what, to food service and bus drivers and mechanics and parent groups of whom you're going to see later, thank you for all that you do and have done for every single day. To Summer and Brad, fasten your seatbelts. It is rough, but it is every day totally worth it. I leave with sadness as I really don't know how I will feel all this extra time, but I suspect that my loving husband and family may have some ideas. To Russ and Sarah Lynn and Brian, thank you for letting me try on this role, for supporting me always. I lead this district in strong, competent hands and I can't undermine any more than a possible. And since I still live just around the corner, I will put my thoughts in whatever, ask or not. And I thank you all and I care about each of you always.
And we're going to lunch next week. It's not really a party. It's just a new forum. Well, so, I really wrestled with what to say. I was in church on Sunday, listening to the sermon, writing a million things on my little bulletin and my husband looked at me like, what's going on? You're not gonna say all that in the meeting, are you? Then I went to lunch with Matt Monday and... Then I went to lunch with Matt one day, and I said, "What should I do? What should I say?" He goes, "Well, not too little, but not too much." So, that wasn't a lot of help either. So then I sat down at my computer, and I thought, "I'm gonna go through all my LaPierre emails, get inspired, and see what we've done." Then I realized I have saved all eight hundred and fifty-four emails. A lot of mine, of course. But weekenders, and board packets, and T L T minutes, and contract digests. But, so I didn't go through them all. But I went back to the beginning, and the first emails I received were May twentieth, two thousand and eleven, because that was the day that I was appointed. And so that very day, I got emails from Debbie Thompson, Kevin Rose, Craig Girard, Gary Oyster, Karen Rodent, and Bill Leylaw, who I replaced because he moved out of state. And just looking that far back, I'm remembering, just reminded me of how many great people I have met in seven years, and they've come and gone, but how they all kind of have a place in your heart. And it made me think, I'm just so fortunate, and I would even say privileged, to have worked side by side with the people in this room. It really has been a life-changing journey. A life-changing chapter in my life. I feel so thankful to have played a part in meaningful work, and to have a front row seat for many successes, and there have been a lot of successes. As the chair of the T L T committee, I'm so excited, as I leave, to see the upward trends in our M-step scores, to see the results of all this hard work. Katie and Tammy talking about the coaching of our teachers, the alignment of our curriculum, the newer curriculum adoptions. I mean, we've just done so many things, and it's all coming together. And it's just such a great feeling to have been a part of that, and to know it's in good hands. And I'd just like to take some time to express my thankfulness for the particular people in this room. For Mary Moss, has a beautiful smile, always a positive attitude, just such a sunny disposition. Can never have a bad day when Mary entered the room. I'm gonna miss Mary a lot. Mark Rader, one of the most steadfast people I know. Just vast knowledge and experience, and his kindness, and of course, his thoughtfulness, always baking and making us cupcakes. I don't know anyone who does that, so, that's a wonderful trait of Mark's.
There's one last treat time.
Oh! Thank you. All right, all right. Jared, the voice of LaPierre schools. Somebody who's so multi-talented. I put never flagging enthusiasm. A person of just strong convictions, and just the deepest loyalty to our school district. Just a very unique person. So happy to know you. Jen Tindall, unrelenting desire to help the most vulnerable children, or special needs children, in any way possible. Always going above and beyond to help children who are so in need. That's just a wonderful quality. Michelle Bratford, our distinguished alumni, who is hardworking and dedicated beyond measure, honestly. I have written, she is one of the most unwavering and determined people I've ever known. Far none. Kim Seeperton, I remember Kim intimidated me for a long time.
Me, too.
I'm like, "Wow, she's so smart, and strong, and confident." And it took me a while, but she just, her intelligence, her memory, her unrelenting energy. Sometimes I think she's doing the work of three people. In fact, I know she really is. She's probably thinking, "We could hire some more people." And then I got Matt Landry, visionary and bold leader. Willing to innovate and fight for our district, to undertake the hard work, no matter what comes. Even in the midst of difficult times, he maintains a positive outlook and uses humor to always lighten our load. He even takes my many weekly audio comments with good cheer. I'm not sure you're really listening to them, but you catalog them.
I have my cheer to come and listen.
I know, I know. He told me. I have, I will always be grateful for your leadership. Matt and I began this journey as colleagues, but we end as friends. And moving on to the board, getting Jan. You're always so involved in LaPierre community, always so community-oriented, and always giving of yourself in every way possible to LaPierre. Thankful for you and your efforts. For Lisa Novak, I worked hard to get you on the board, and here you are. And I think we all appreciate how smart you are, how experienced you are. You always provide valuable and real-world experiences that are measurable. So, thank you to Lisa. To Denise. Denise is just an inspiration as a person, right? When I think about your personal tragedies, and here you are. You know, you just keep showing up, you can never let them stop you from living life. You soldier on, and you always put other people first. And I wrote, "You are a pillar of LaPierre." Probably one of the best people I know. And Peggy, I put, "You are our school board mom." And you are everything a good mom should be. Funny, and friendly, loving, and warm, and caring, and dependable, but super smart, and a good mom should be super smart. You're as smart as all good, and you have a great memory, you're never forgetting it. And I got Mike Nolan. Couldn't see him like on there. I said, "Mike is probably one of the strongest, most passionate people I know." And it's funny, he says the same thing about me, but I put that right back in. He can just always pull the passion. He's never afraid to do what is right and go after what is right. I love his wit, and I grew up hoping for a limer. And I think I'll still get it.
January, maybe.
Yeah.
I wrote, "Jared, we're gonna record it and send it to you."
I was hoping for that.
Hi Wendy, it's Matt. And it's gonna be twenty minutes long.
Another twenty minutes.
Say that for me.
But I wrote, "Mike Nolan is one of the most upstanding people I've ever met." And then Mike Keller, I put, "He is our rock. He is the anchor of this team. He literally is driven every single day to make LaPierre a great school district." I honestly believe that when he jumps out of bed, he's probably thinking, "What can we do to make LaPierre a great..." I really do. He always talks about making LaPierre world-class, and the best school district in the world. And I really believe that he is fighting for that. And LaPierre has benefited immensely under his leadership. So I would like to thank all of you for seven great years of purpose, and laughter, support, struggle, achievement, tears, and joy. Audio comments, cupcakes. I wrote, "You are all like a family to me, and I love you all." And I'd like to, and with a couple comments, I'd like to thank my husband Keith. He loves this. He just loves the adventure. My best friend. I wrote, "Keith really was my role model." I said, "Early in our marriage, and for years, it was always Keith who coached all of our daughters, all of their friends, scores of LaPierre children." In fact, our basement is filled with pictures of all of the teams that he has coached over the years. Never asked for a thank you, just always gave of himself. He was the president of LaPierre West at Blood and Boosters. He helps people in so many quiet ways, and he has an elder and a deacon in our church. So it was really his example that inspired me to community service. So I'd like to thank my husband Keith for making me a better person and for always supporting me. And finally, I wish all the best to Brad and to Summer. I know you will lead the district well. My wish is that along with providing our young people an outstanding education in every way, that we also continue to instill in them great values. What is best about America. Kindness, empathy, understanding, respect, justice, and integrity. So that our country can remain the light of the world in that shining city upon hill. So, thank you very much. God bless all of you.
Takes us to the superintendent comments.
Mr. President, wanted to echo a lot of the comments made by the board to welcome Brad Summer here. I think you can see that you're joining a connected, committed team of people. And while, you know, we mentioned just former board members, and Peggy, you've seen a lot of superintendents and board members, that the continuity of our district and the teamwork are universal, common threads that transcend individual members. And so, while we lose two great people tonight, whose almost thirty years of service combined is something to admire. I think they differ to tell you that they're part of a team. Right? And it takes, it takes all of us, and they've been major contributors to that. So, welcome to you, and we look forward to your first meeting a month from today, it's gonna be great. To the presenters this evening, Katie and Tammy. I've already spoken how impactful I think coaching has been on our district, and we will continue to support it and enhance it. And you're doing, you're doing the real work that the board, set of all players of the team, are here to support. What you guys do every day is what makes this district great. And we are just here to support it. So, thank you for taking time out of your evenings to share with us that work that you're doing. You know, Mike said it best, that this, being a board member, I mean, I get paid in here. Yeah, I'm a, I'm a paid employee, COLT, we're, we're paid employees. Board members, don't do anything. They don't do anything, but a lot of headaches. They got a coffee cup tonight. I'll take a bag and continue.
I was so excited for that.
And two pence!
I'm like, "Did I copy it?"
And two pence, and two pence.
How much coffee is it?
Next week, next month, coffee will come. If you sign up to do this, and you look at the number of people in our community who, like a coach, for example, there's a lot of, a lot of great implied, intrinsic, and overt benefits of being a coach. You know, the thrill of winning and losing and competing, the look in the child's eye when you reach them, or the support of all the parents on the sideline who love every decision that you make. But there's a lot of immediate feedback. For a board member, that, that's not necessarily the case. You're charged with putting yourself out there in front of an entire community of people, and working with the district administration, and making some really tough decisions that are very, very personal. Because when you're talking about decisions that impact children, people's most precious asset, what's most important to each of us who have, have children, you're, you're gonna strike nerves, and you're gonna, you're gonna hit chords. And sometimes you're not gonna like the sound they make when you, when you strike those chords. And you have sat up here for a number of years, and had to hear the number of criticisms, and you, you face the dirty looks in the community, and the snarkiness on, on social media, and articles in the paper directed at you, or... And then there aren't a lot of people that just simply come and say thanks for all you do. And I don't even say it enough. And it's evenings like this where we just take a moment, you know, and, you know, say thank you, but also honor the individual contributions that you've both made. And Wendy, I really appreciate what you said. We had coffee this morning with Peggy, and I felt it there, too, that you started as, you know, colleagues, and you're working through some of these tough issues, and the next thing you know, seven years later, you got a friend. Eight years later, you got a friend. Twenty years later, you've got many friends. And, you know, Peggy, you and I had a very unique relationship. That as you serve as board president, the board president, the superintendent, you know, always have a unique relationship, or at least they should, in a high-functioning school district. You are steady. You are, that word's been used a number of times, you're a rock, you, you lead with grace. Your, your quiet demeanor and approach is something that I am very envious of. Because I'm not so quiet. I think you always appreciate, at least you should, appreciate others' characteristics that you wish you possessed. And I look at you, I wish I was more like you in a lot of ways. You're very measured, you're thoughtful, you're caring, you're empathetic, but you're unwavering in your belief. Every time I talk to you, I walk away feeling richer in the birth of the experience, whether it's a casual conversation, or even talking about our district's deepest issues. And I appreciate it's your leadership, your support, and friendship during some difficult times that we face as, as a district. And we sat next to each other, and we heard a lot of opinions. You know, and you always calm me, and just say, "Hey, we're doing the right things, we'll get through it." That, that really helped me a lot. Wendy, you said so many nice things this evening about, about everyone, and that I think is really a microcosm of your, your personality. You, you bring so much joy to any organization you're part of, a positive way in which you look at the world. Right? It's always, you begin with yes. And so few people can say that. And especially when we occupy a position where most people, when they hear the ideas we present, start with no. Right? They're so quick in our society and culture to point out negative, the reasons why something won't work. And you have never, I don't think maybe in your entire life, I've only known you for a small portion of your life, but I can't imagine you confronting a challenge or hearing an idea and not seeking the positive. And we need more, more people like you in the board. So, thank you for, for voting. Not just your time, but who you are as a person has, has made this board, you made it better. You know, and Peggy, both have just, and you talk about how people come in out of your life and they change you, and at least they should. Because what is this all about? What are we all doing if, if not to become better people? And so, I know that you've impacted all these people, the number of staff and students, that your decisions have impacted. And you don't even get to see the results. Right? You come in for a meeting or two a month, like a, a committee meeting, and you listen to these decisions, you weigh in, you think thoughtfully about them. You're, you're up at night, you're sending emails or messages, and you're thinking about this work. For anybody that thinks the two of you didn't devote your entire soul to this job, a volunteer job, they're crazy. And so, I don't care, you know, I'll, I'll talk for another hour. Because it's one meeting out of a hundred where we don't demand something of them, we don't criticize the decision that you made, and we just say thank you. And, you know, five-minute speech can't do your work justice. And this district, at least in my time here, in my eight years as superintendent, is not where it's at today. Is not on the trajectory that we're on without this board, without this support. And the two of you have demonstrated leadership and commitment unbearable by many of your predecessors. And I know I speak, and I, I, you know, the board speaks on their own behalf, on behalf of the COLT team. You know, as we, we've been meeting in recent weeks trying to process the loss. We're kind of in mourning a little bit. Not because we're not hopeful for the future, we will always be, but there's a time and place to move on, and right now, we're just not. We've just been sharing stories in recent weeks and months about the two of you, and... Most of them are positive. But on the, on the, on behalf of the COLT team, I don't, I don't just speak for myself. These people have a deep and abiding respect for the two of you. Have a... Oftentimes, I think it's easy as a board member to think, you know, "Man, COLT's just coming in these committee meetings, and they're throwing all this stuff at us, and there's all this jargon, and all these acronyms, and all this work, and, and they're in and out, and they're making decisions, and..." Kind of, sometimes as a board member, it can be overwhelming. I mean, I know if I put myself into the nursing field, for example, came to one of your meetings, and you asked me to make a decision about something that you do, I, I, I would be like Googling everything you say, because I would have no idea.
My first appointment is at ten, Marley.
I just don't think people appreciate that, like how hard it is to come from a not, be a non-educator, drop in here, not even a non-educator, but not, not, you both educated, right? But not, not being in public schools, and come in here and not only figure out what the heck we're talking about, but then offer meaningful contributions. about, but then offer meaningful contributions along the way. And you've done that, and then some. And one of the things that we talk about in our COLT team, and we have a great team too, and I know you guys recognize that, how we interact with each other, is there's a lot of disagreement in the room. There's never, there's never a moment where someone presents an idea and everyone says, "Hey, that's great." Somebody always has a critique of it, it's usually Kim.
But it could be others.
It could be others. I can't remember the last time it was Mike, but I'll let you know what it is. But what we say, what we say, even though there's consternation in the midst of the conversation, is that the product is always, always better as a result of the teamwork, the sharing of ideas, and the fact that we're all equal. No one's the boss, no one's the subordinate, there's seven heads, six heads around the table, and the product is always better. And we have individual voices on this board, but we, in my time here, have always spoken as one. And that is in large part because you folks recognize that the board member's role is indeed one. Yes, you're an individual person, yes, you have individual insight, yes, you have personal opinion, and you offer those opinions, but you were always part of the larger team. And the people in our community, our employees, the parents and students that watch you, understood that and appreciate that about you, and they appreciate it about us as a result. So, thank you very much.
Before we go, I was going to say one last thing. I wanted my mom's here, and I forgot to thank my mother. You gotta thank your mom, right? I have a wonderful mom, she made me who I am. So thank your mother, I love you.
And I just want to let you know, Matt, we're talking about your compensation, your pension is based on your base salary. Well, even resources for your specific benefit amount. Multiply zero, zero times the number of years.
I don't know that many.
But they have fully vested.
It's a lifetime.
It's a lifetime. I don't know who is going to do this in the future, but I need enough motion.
But I would, great reluctance and excitement, make motion to a jury.
And I was, absolutely. Have a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Kialy?
Hi, I'm Laura Scheffler, Merry Christmas.
Before we leave, we're going to head over to the sign for everyone. We want to give some plaques to Peggy and Wendy, we'll take some pictures as a whole board, but we want to make sure that they, we're not letting you leave just yet.
And a cupcake.